I mean not called the board meeting work session. We'll start with doing the pledge of allegiance, please. If everyone would stand in.
United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm now going to call the board roll call. District one Jasmine Bowles is not with us. She's out of the country. Okay, was the meeting called back to order? It wasn't. District one Jasmine Bowles cannot be with us this evening. District two Mark Christmas. District three Ms. Dr. Jesse Goree. Present. District four Ms. Williams. She's on Zoom. Did she acknowledge? Okay. District five Dr. Dee Haney. District six Ms. Mary Baker. District seven Ms. Sabrina Hill. She's present but not at the table right now. District eight Ms. Joy Tellis Cooper. Present. And I'm district nine Benjamin Striker. Superintendent Dr. Anthony Smith. Present. Attorney Clem Doyle. Present. Board liaison Kim Blackwood. Assistant to the superintendent Ms. Alicia Battle. Assistant to the deputy superintendent Ms. Dawn Biles. Thank you. At this time now I'm going to read the ethics statement. In accordance with board policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflicts of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved. I'm now going to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda. Okay, I got a first by Mr. Mark Christmas and seconded by Ms. Joy Cooper. Can I get a vote? Unanimous. Ms. Williams?
Okay. It's unanimous. Everybody that's here minus Jasmine Bowles.
We now will have public participation prior to public participation. I'm going to read a statement. The Clayton County Board of Education welcomes public participation and will hear any interested individual pursuant to the guidelines outlined in policy BCBI. Members of the public will not be allowed to discuss individual personnel issues or confidential student matters. Speakers must identify themselves and topic before speaking. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak and time may not be yielded from one speaker to another. Board members will not respond to comments from speakers. The chairman may respond as appropriate. Issues requiring possible action by the board may be added to future agendas. Issues that may need to be addressed by the administration will be duly noted. Abusive language and/or personal attacks will not be permitted.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, ma'am. Are we not doing public participation? I mean, I'm sorry, board recognitions this evening?
There are no board recognitions for this evening.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
All right, my first speaker for this evening is Mr. Eddie Boyd.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Boyd, Clayton County. Tonight I want to address a couple of issues, right?
Can you pull your mic?
I want to bring another issue, bring an issue that on October 1st that I kind of brought to the board's attention that we need to kind of change the policies for us classified versus certified employees' rights. You know, there's so many employees in our district that from bus drivers, custodians, to you name it, right? That does work on a daily basis. And due process is a cornerstone of our country. And it's very important that everyone gets a fair shake. You know, initially things can seem one way and may not exactly get it right. And if that person feels passionate about whatever the issue may be, especially in a school environment where you're coming across different backgrounds and all this on a daily basis and the job is to educate, right? Every employee needs to have the same rights as the other because otherwise it's not equal, right? And if we have a department that in the definition is equal, yeah, if we can't say one thing and it's actually enough, right? So happy Juneteenth to everyone. And you know, even coming on the back of Juneteenth, right? January 1st, 1863, the slaves were free. So slaves didn't know until June 19th, 1865, and they were in bondage that long. What I bought here tonight is my family, I've been trusted by my family, family album that dates back to them. It's that important. People died along the way for certain rights that should be afforded to every. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Mr. Marlon Brown.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent, Board. As many of you know, I've approached you guys before. I've kind of settled in as a parent here in Clayton County Public Schools. But tonight I want to kind of address what's coming for you guys. Something that was brought to my attention this afternoon. I'm a parent of a student of a Haney Elementary. And it sounds like you may be losing our principle. I come from a legacy of strong leadership when it comes to education. I'm a product of Frederick Douglass High School, the illustrious Dr. Samuel L. Hill, and as well as his predecessor, Dr. Eldon Porter. So for me, having a high value on education, leadership was a key part of that. And I know when you find a good leader, it's hard to let him go, or you may want to put him where you best, where you feel they're best served. So I get that. I understand that Dr. Mohammed may not be pushing back or may not be saying no or wanting to rock the boat. But the testament to her leadership is that her staff has reached out to me, not once, but twice. This is the second time that I've heard that she's been possibly on the, on the road to be moved to another school, whether that's her choice, whether it's a need. I would ask that for the sake of stability and consistency that our students need, strong leadership, let's not change when we have a good thing in place. I also have a student, Akil Patrick. And so for me, with having a high value on education, I seek places where my kids, my scholars are going to have strong leaders. So I've already lost one with Miss Jessica retiring. And I trust that you guys begged and pleaded and grappled onto her ankles to keep her here. So I can understand, you know, her retiring. But I also have been in a school where the leadership wasn't as strong, which is why I was had a choice or made the choice to move one of my scholars from one school to Kilpatrick. Because I've seen what changing in leaderships, whether it's an interim principal, whether it's, whether it was COVID, whether it's whatever. I can, I've seen firsthand as a parent, what the inconsistency of not having a consistent or strong or proven leader in a school, you know, where you've got two and three principals and then a, you know, three or five year span can do. So I'm asking you guys, for the sake of our students, that we focus on the leadership, we focus on the consistency, let's keep Dr. Mohammed in the place that she's in. And in the words of Tower of Power, let's not change a horse in the middle of the street. So I thank you guys. If it's up for a vote, I ask if you guys will table it or vote no on moving Dr. Mohammed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maya Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Maya Michaela Davis, and I have the honor of serving as the president of the Young Democrats of Clayton County. A few weeks ago, I was struck by an idea, not just a thought, but a vision, one that I believe has the power to shape election outcomes, uplift communities, and transform the very future of our democracy, starting right here in Clayton County. Our schools teach the three branches of government, and that's a start. But in this critical moment in our nation's history, that is not enough. It's not enough for our students to simply memorize facts about Congress, the presidency, or the courts. We need to go deeper. We need to connect the dots between civic structure and civic power, between the lessons taught in the classroom and the lives of our students live every day. That is why I'm proposing a bold but very necessary shift in our K through 12 curriculum, one that puts real, accessible, and empowering civics educations at the heart of every student's experience. Imagine a student body where every young person knows how, why voting matters, not just in presidential elections, but in local school board and city council races. How to vote, where to vote, and how to research the issues and candidates with clarity and confidence. How to recognize that the decisions made by the government from the classroom funding to clean water access are not distant abstract policies, but real choices that affect their families, their future, and their everyday lives. This isn't just about tests. It's not even just about knowledge. It's about power. It's about making sure every young person in Clayton County, no matter their zip code or background, knows that their voice matters, that their vote matters, and that they matter. If we want a thriving, inclusive society, we have to build it from the ground up that starts in our classrooms. Let's be clear, this is not a partisan issue. This is a justice issue, an empowerment issue, an equity issue. We are not just preparing our students to enter the workforce. We are preparing them to shape the world. And if we want that world to be more just, more compassionate, more reflective of the people it serves, then our students must be equipped to lead the charge. Let's give them the tools. Let's give them the language. Let's give them the belief that their voice can shake the ground and change the course of history. As part of this commitment, the Young Democrats of Clayton County are launching a back-to-school empowerment fundraiser because students can't leave if they don't have the resources that they need. Whether it's backpacks or supervisory dollar we raise goes directly to preparing our young people, not just for classrooms, but for leadership. If you believe in this vision, in the power of informed, engaged youth, then I invite you to donate. No contribution is too small when it's a part of building something bigger than ourselves. I would be honored to speak further with you about how this vision could be implemented in our schools. Let us work together, educators, parents, leaders, students, to build a future where no young person ever feels disconnected or disempowered again.
Thank you so much, ma'am. And that concludes our public participation. Prior to going to executive session, I forgot on the roll call to acknowledge our interns. First and foremost, we have a brand new intern with us, Adrian Fernandez Partita. Could you stand for us, please? He's our new intern. And our parting interns who are all sitting together, Dolan Ijalo. Say your last name, Doran. Say it. Jaleh Rain Walker. And lastly, Trang Dong. Trang has been working with the construction people at the district office for like the last week and a half. So she's being mentored by the project manager who actually went to Georgia Tech and majored in the exact same major that Trang is going to do. That's direct experience. Thank you. Now I'll hand the
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, can we take a moment of silence, please?
Sure.
First of all, one of our coworkers, Ms. Suzie Schelman, lost her daughter. And I would like for us to take a moment of silence to reflect upon her life, please.
Thank you.
And also, I would like to say, since that young lady just came up, I would also just like for us to think about what's going on in our country right now and keep our country and all of us in prayer because it's some things that are going on. And I think everybody knows, I don't, I want to be politically correct, but let's keep ourselves in prayer and pray for the leadership of this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the executive session recommendations. Mr. Superintendent, the platform is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairwoman, members of the board, staff and community members. I would like for the board to consider for principalship at Riverdale High School, Ms. Sharon Wilson.
Ms. Corrie.
Well, first of all, I want to, let me make the motion. I want to move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation of Ms. Sharon Wilson as principal of Riverdale High School.
Mr. Christmas?
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote? Ms. Williams? If Ms. Williams. All right. And it's not as you'll get the vote of Ms. Williams when you can, but you got everybody here. All right. The motion passes, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, Ms. Wilson's in the audience, please stand and be recognized and congratulations. Thank you, board members. I would also like for the board to consider for the Assistant Principal position at Hawthorne Elementary, Dr. Atilia Brookshire.
Ms. Baker?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Dr. Brookshire as the Assistant Principal at Hawthorne Elementary.
Ms. Tellis Cooper?
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote? It's unanimous pending Ms. Williams. She up saying? Okay.
Dr. Brookshire, if you're present, please stand and be recognized and congratulations. I believe that the board members would like to take a picture with the appointees. If you both would, am I, okay, if you would both come down.
And every one of you board members will have three minutes to give us an update on on what's been going on. Mr. Christmas, you're waving your, okay. Ms. Corrie?
I would like to speak to the excellent Leadership Institute that the Clayton County Public Schools had under the leadership of Dr. Smith. And I had an excellent, it was an excellent activity. I just want to let everybody know that our staff at all of our schools throughout Clayton County in every department have been doing such an exceptional job. And I'm going to take my hat off to the to the elementary schools. Because when I sat in on their workshops, I remembered when I was working at an elementary school and how much work we did, but I was just in shock with all of the reporting and everything. I, I, I'm gonna, I won't say names because I probably missed somebody. But particularly, I sat in on the workshop for the ESAL department and I believe just regular ed reporting. And it's just so time consuming. And we really need to walk a mile in our employee shoes to understand what they're doing. Our elementary schools do so much work. They're the foundation of our system. And I will put this out there that we do need more help at the elementary level because I don't know if this is the case or not. Maybe now we have actually put back a secretary in our elementary schools, but I know at one time we took them away. We've taken away our student engagement specialist. So now we don't have anyone to work with discipline and ISS and all those types of things. I was just really surprised at how much work that those people did within the schools. And so I hope that next year when we're talking about budgeting, that maybe we might create another position that's not contingent upon federal funds, but just looking at our own budget to help our elementary schools. So I want to thank the leadership that put that together. I believe that would be Dr. Young and all of those people that follow under teaching and learning. But I also looking at Chief Walker. They tried to get me to come in on their workshop and I didn't really think I wanted to come in there. But everybody did a great job. Every department helped. And just thank you all so much, Clayton County Public Schools employees for each and everything that you do each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Haney?
My mic sounds nice. Okay. I want to thank the maintenance department. There was a situation on this past Friday. They came to the rescue, made sure, insured, double-checked, triple-checked. Great communication also to our construction department for ensuring that the grounds and all what's going on with all our different buildings are taking place. As you know, we have some construction going around in our district. So I want to thank them for their transparency, as well as our transportation departments for our summer schools to ensure our students are where they need to be. And overall, just thank the district for the hard work they're doing, even though it's summertime. I thought my phone would stop ringing, but nevertheless, I want to thank you all for what you all do.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. I am skipping on my update. Ms. Baker?
Okay, first of all, I just, I know we had Juneteenth celebrations at different places, and I went to Jonesboro, got to see the Jonesboro Band, of course, perform. And they did a great big fundraiser for them. And I, and I'm, you know, always proud of them, but I thank Jonesboro for coming out to support the band also. Another thing is, we're getting ready to start our summer break. I don't know, the Fourth of July break. I want to thank each and every one of our employees for all the work you do. And somebody, a couple of people down from me probably doesn't want me to say this, but I suggest that you all go take that break, turn off your phones, hide, take a vacation. You know, back in the day when you used to go on vacation and nobody could get a hold of you because you didn't have a cell phone? That's what I'd like to see because you all need to be refreshed and rejuvenated to come back because then we get ready to start the New Year. So that is my words of wisdom. And again, like I said, somebody, a couple down from me probably doesn't want me to say that, but please turn off the phones.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Ms. Hill?
Yes. I just want to say thank you to everyone for the opportunity to serve you as a board member. It is truly both an honor and a privilege. This week, as we stood together for the ribbon cutting of the historical Rosenwald School in Jonesboro, my heart was filled with joy. Seeing former students, many of them, one couple had met in first grade, and they were still together, and that was amazing. Some of them mentioned that they walked three miles to and from school. And just to honor education and value it, it reminded me of the strength and resilience that runs deep in our community. It affords with integrity, honesty, and purpose. I do not take these responsibilities lightly. I diligently read every board packet. I ask necessary questions and verify information to ensure I'm making the best possible decisions for our students, our staff, and families. I took an oath to serve and I intend to honor it fully. You may see me involved in efforts like the NACA housing work session. I do this work for two reasons. First, because statistics show that students experiencing homelessness can lose four to six months of learning. Most of these students in Clayton County schools are at the elementary level, which is critical times in their development. Second, because early childhood education has proven long-term impact, leading to higher school graduation rates and 50% increase in going to college attendance. To remove these barriers, I've partnered with organizations to build stronger families and communities. I'm proud of the turnout from our district staff and the active involvement of groups like Moms on a Mission from our homeless education department who are prepared for want to say that for our employees who have shown up, if there's anything that I can do or assist, please contact me. NACA has graciously assured me that the conference on August the 21st will be a conference where we will be able to take priority for Clayton County staff and community to ensure that their documents are uploaded and approved because Bank of America will be on site. I am so grateful to serve not only academically, but to build families and communities that are stronger to build generational wealth and legacies that they can leave. So I want to say in closing, thank you. I just really appreciate the opportunity for you entrusting me in this capacity to focus on our students, which is always our core business, and to our staff that is invaluable at every turn in this district. Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Ms. Tellis Cooper?
Good evening. Just updates. I wanted to take a brief moment. I think Ms. Patricia Kane is here with us tonight. She lost her husband. She's one of our Assistant Principals at Monday's meal. So I do want to let her know that we are thinking about you and we are praying for you. So updates with the tour. There was a tour. We had a, Ms. Hill had the opportunity to go around with Veronica and view the confection center. And it is coming along very well. I'm very impressed. I'm excited to see what it's going to look like in a couple of more months. And I am ready for our students to be able to enjoy the benefits that will come from that. Also, I want to thank all of the teachers of the year that came out and sat with me and had lunch. We had a chat and chew for the teachers of the year. We were able to just sit around. It was very informal. We talked about different things, just kind of had fun. So I really enjoyed that and thank you for taking out two hours of your time and spending that time with me so we could just chat and chew. So you'll see more of that.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Williams has nothing?
Mr. Striker, could I make a correction real quick? I neglected to acknowledge Dr. Colbert and I believe Dr. Hopkins, who actually were the ones that spearheaded the leadership retreat. Want to give credit to where credit is due.
Thank you. We now have announcements. The announcements were done by our
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, District Administrators, Superintendent Dr. Smith. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and I am District Administrators, Superintendent Dr. Smith, and citizens of Clayton County. My name is Dolan Ijale, and I am a 2025 graduate of Charles R. Drew High School.
My name is Trang Dong, and I am a 2025 graduate of Ribria High School.
My name is Ryan Walker, and I'm a 2025 graduate of Lovejoy High School.
And we are the Clayton County Board of Education interns.
Here are your board announcements.
The district will be closed in observance of summer break Monday, June 30th through Friday, July 4th. All schools and offices will return to their existing schedules of operation on Monday, July 7th, the first working day of the 2025-2026 school year.
New teacher orientation will begin Monday, July 21st and continue through Friday, July 25th. Sessions will be held at the Professional Learning Center, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. daily.
Clayton County Public Schools will hold its annual back-to-school bash on Saturday, July 26th, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. District students and their families should
District students and their families should attend the locations associated with their student's school. Host sites are Charles Drew High School, Forest Park High School, Mount Zion High School and Eddie White Academy. Each site will host informative parent session and distribute free school supplies while supplies last. More information can be found on the district's website.
Pre-planning for the district's teachers and other instructional employees will begin on Monday, July 28th and continue through Friday, August 1st.
The 2025-2026 Open House Meet and Greet Day for Clayton County Public Schools has been set for Thursday, July 31st. Sessions will be as follows. Elementary schools at 1 p.m., middle schools at 3 p.m. and high schools at 5 p.m.
The July Board Work Session is scheduled for Monday, July 28th at 5 p.m. Unless otherwise posted, this meeting will be held at the Performing Arts Center in Jonesboro.
The first day of the 2025-2026 school year for students will be Monday, August 4th.
The first board meeting for the 2025-2026 school year is scheduled for Monday, August 4th at 6 p.m. Unless otherwise posted, this meeting will be held at the Performing Arts Center in Jonesboro.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes tonight's announcements.
You guys really represented us perfectly. I thank you all for that and I need Ms. Blackwood to please stand up. Ms. Blackwood, let me say this. As, as, as Dr. Goree said, my mother taught me to give credit where credit is due. And um there's no way I could go on with the meeting without shouting out Ms. Blackwood. Um, I'm amazed when I look at her every single day because the love that she has for these interns is unreal. It's unreal. Like she genuinely loves these students and she forces them to be the best that they can. And with um Dr. Smith and I, um, and Ms. Baker had an agenda meeting and we didn't realize that school was out, so we didn't know who was going to do the announcements. And when I told Ms. Blackwood to um organize the interns to do the announcement, that's what we got. That's, that's perfection at its best. So if we could just give her a hand for the love which she has brought forth. All right, um, we now have the approval of the minutes. The minutes from the board session on May 27th, 2025. Do any of the board members have any change on those minutes? Seeing none, we'll move to the next. Minutes for the board meeting, June 2nd, 2025. Do any of the board members have any changes to those minutes? All right, seeing none, I hand the podium back over to you, Dr. um Smith, for the updates to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Dr. Delphi Young, Deputy Superintendent for Teaching and Learn, come forward.
Good evening. Good evening. Chair, Striker, Madam Vice Chair, Baker, members of the school board, audience, uh, Dr. Smith. First of all, I want to say um thanks to Dr. Keith Colbert, of course, his team led by, don't look at me like I'm crazy. Dr. Hopkins and the principals and assistant principals and all the staff members who really put together a wonderful, wonderful um leadership retreat. This year, we returned to something old. We had not only our school leaders, we had our district leaders involved and engaged. And so thank you for organizing that uh wonderful program. Very, very informative. So tonight, the updates includes presentation from Dr. Gloria Duncan. She is going to share with us wonderful information about our growing TAP program. Following her, you're going to hear from Dr. Charmin Johnson, who is going to share with us all of our elementary school initiatives. Um, very exciting stuffs going on, so please give them your undivided attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, our Superintendent Dr. Smith, Board Members and members of Clayton County Staff and our stakeholders. It is a pleasure for me today to talk to you about our Professional Learning Department in which the TAP program resides. Before I talk to you about TAP, you will observe I have put some outstanding things that have been accomplished at the Professional Learning Center this year for your information. We have offered 48 classes at Professional Learning this year and we have uh accomplished quite a bit. They have been presenting at national conferences and are in high demand. So thank you very much for allowing me to share that moment with you. Now, for TAP talks, before I can talk to you about TAP, I must talk to you about what is an EPP. An EPP is an educational preparation provider. Clayton County is an EPP. All schools do not have EPPs. Your EPP is in good standing with the Professional Standards Commission. If it was not for the EPP, we would not have TAP. When we talk about the EPP, we are talking about TAP and we are talking about endorsement classes. Why? Because these two programs are approved by the Professional Standards Commission for us to have the same power as an accredited college, a university in certifying people and the certification actually goes on their certificates just as it would if they attended an accredited college or university. Therefore, those people who come to our TAP program are not provisional teachers. They are not waiver teachers. When they complete the program, they are fully certified state teachers as any other college would produce. We are so proud of our program because if you look, you will notice that we have really, really grown over the years. If you notice, we graduated over 70 people this year, which is our largest graduating class since I've been at Professional Learning since 2012. You will also notice that we have gained 33% in participation with TAP to the extent that we are expecting to have over 200 participants in TAP by the end of FY '26. We have currently just approved over 80 people to participate. We have traveled to colleges across the state to recruit and all of these have produced hits from about over 300 people, 84, 84 of whom have met the requirements to be in the TAP program and we're very proud to welcome them. So please note those numbers. As we move through the year and look at the vacancies in Clayton County, there is a need to do more than one session of input or intake during the year. Therefore, we will have one intake of about 86 people in June or the first week in July, they will start training. And also another intake that will take place in January to help fill those vacancies that are out there. We had 385 people apply to be in TAP. All of them were not able to get in immediately because the state Gaze has changed. Gaze is now under Pearson. Our staff members attended a training session today on exactly how the Gaze would change so that we will know how to prepare Gaze training sessions for those who need to take the test. We are so proud of the growth. The second thing in addition to TAP are the endorsements. Clayton County has more endorsements than most recent. We have 10 endorsements and two endorsements with which we partner with Metro RISA to make sure that we're meeting the requirements of dyslexia and also ESOL. All the other endorsements belong to Clayton County School System. Therefore, when those members of our staff are attending those particular endorsements, when they complete them, they will go on their state certificates and stay there. I do not want to prolong things, so I will open up for questions if you have any questions at this time.
Fantastic. Dr. Duncan, that's quite of an impressive program and we thank you. Okay, there's a few questions? All right, Ms. Baker?
Um, I think this is wonderful that we're doing it in our backyard, um, but I'm going to play the devil's advocate here. These people who are getting this, is there a fee? And if so or not so, are they required to stay with us a certain amount of time? Because I keep hearing that we're training these people up really, really good to go somewhere else and I don't want to do that.
I'm glad you mentioned that. It is free. They do have to pay for the Gaze, but it is free. But part of the contract is that they remain with Clayton County School System for three years after they complete their certificate, which means that is a five-year commitment to Clayton County Public Schools.
Ms. Goree?
Yes, you mentioned, you said EPP.
Yes.
Can you tell us what that stands for?
Yes, ma'am. It's an educational performance provider. And that was my, I'll go back and do my original statement on it. What it is, is it is approved program for our district because we put in a lot of paperwork, had to go through a lot of training in order to have it. Every school district does not have that. That allows us to certify teachers both in the endorsement area and in the TAP. Yes, that's what it's called.
Yes, ma'am. I'm very proud of you. I just, you know, heard the acronym. I always like to know what the acronym, acronym stand for. You're doing an excellent job.
Thank you so much.
Very excellent job. Thank you.
Dr. Duncan, would you happen to know in the metro Atlanta area, how many other districts, just in the metro Atlanta area, have EPPs? Or APPs?
A lot of them have lost their EPPs. I could give you more. I am, I think when, when that has one, um, Atlanta no longer has one. Henry doesn't have one. So we're sort of out there and the others are further out like West Georgia and uh places like that, but it's a big deal.
Ms. Hill?
I just wanted to say thank you so much. This is an amazing program and a great opportunity for our staff and our community.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Cooper, anything? Dr. Duncan, you, you're, you said that we had 380 something that applied for the TAP program?
Right, because we went to several colleges ourselves to recruit. And therefore, because the Gaze changed, a lot of people did not have the opportunity to take the Gaze before it sunset on the 15th of June.
Got you.
And so a new test goes in place July 1st. So we're in the process of planning for that, but I spoke to Ms. Albritton earlier today about how we might be able to attract some of those people who did not get a chance to take the Gaze before we went to a new Gaze.
Got you.
And therefore, uh, we might be able to still put them in Clayton County on waiver certificates until they can take the Gaze and uh we're working uh towards that.
Good deal. Last question, um, what is our capacity for the TAP program? How many teachers can we train per?
We are over capacity right now. Our teacher development specialists will be serving over 20 people each. And so we are bringing them in and in hopes that if we go over capacity, there will be some way made where we can uh continue to bring in a lot of TAP candidates.
Uh, you, you have a question, Christmas? Haney, you have a question? Thank you so much, Dr. Duncan. That was very informative.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members and our community members. During this evening's presentation, I will provide an update on the Riverdale Early Learning Center and I will also provide information on how we will strengthen early literacy with our K1 structured literacy and executive functioning initiative. Okay, did we go back? Yes. Okay, and I want to start here. Um, this has truly been a team effort um through the elementary academics department, our ELA department, as well as the Division of Student Support Services. So again, everything that I talk about today, it has come together um at the hands of the team. So just want to make sure I'm clear on that. All right, next slide. So at the end of this presentation, um, you will have a good understanding of why a structured literacy approach was initially prioritized for our early intervention program. Also, how we are planning to monitor the progress of the implementation of our early literacy program and how we are building capacity of our teachers who are in charge of teaching in our early literacy program as well as our new initiative, which is executive functioning. So I will share information about that as well. So I'm going to begin with our early, our Riverdale Early Learning Center. And next slide. All right, so we are going to open the Riverdale Early Learning Center in August of 2026 and we will serve pre-K 3, 4 students as well as our kindergarten students. And then the following year, we will intergrade first grade as well as um strengthen our CTAE programs. We will bring those on. And just want to make a point that this will have a future lab site. It will be a future lab site where our students who are in our early childhood education program um in our district, those students will be able to observe in those classrooms as well as outside um participants will be able to observe in our classroom. So it will have a future, it will be a future lab school. Now, in order to get this going, um, the team, we visited several um early learning centers. Um, one was in DeKalb County. We visited the Atlanta Metropolitan Center um as well as I know Viki Denard, she visited um the center in Savannah. Um, we also have brought on a um consultant to help us um to make sure that we are following all of the procedures and processes that are required by the state. And okay, next slide. Oh, and we also partnered with the Rollins Center. So we have an ongoing partnership with them. All right, the next slide. So this talks about our early intervention program and you all know it probably as EIP. And why do we have that program? And it's basically to serve students who are reading below grade level. And it, the focus of it is to get students reading early because again, we know the importance of ensuring that all of our students are reading by um third grade. But again, our goal is to have students reading by the end of first grade. And so we, this year, we implemented um the MC program, which is um Orton-Gillingham. And basically what we did this year is we again are, let me go back to the EIP program. We provide support to our K5 students in reading and math and Orton-Gillingham was implemented for our reading students. Um, we also have um a supportive focus on our K2 students with the foundational skills. And as you know, that was a requirement by the um Georgia Early Literacy Act as well as again, the OG program, which focuses on those, building those foundational skills. Now, why was this rollout critical? Because 76.5% of our K5 students were identified as moderate or high-risk students. or high-risk students or readers. We also, um, wanted to make sure that we followed the requirements of the Georgia Literacy Act, which requires us, again, to teach those foundational skills at the earliest grades. And our focus is to make sure that our students have academic success long-term in grades K through twelve. Now, let's talk a little bit about the science of reading. It is a vast interdisciplinary body of scientifically-based research conducted over five decades and across multiple languages. And it basically lets us, lets us understand how reading is taught and how students understand how to read. Some of the key components of the science of reading are phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And OG, which is Orton-Gillingham, again, applies its undergirded in the science of reading, because it is, it is explicit, and it also is systematic. It builds on from one lesson to the next. So it's cumulative as well. Now, what is our vision for our K-one structured literacy program? Our goal is to ensure that all of our students are reading by the end of first grade, because again, we want to make sure when they get to third grade, that they can grapple with that complex text. And if they can read at an early age, they, they will have the skills needed to do that. We also want to continue to provide high-quality Tier One instruction, which is instruction that every student receives. And then again, our students who are in the early intervention program, who are first grade, kindergarten, first grade students, they will receive a double dose of OG, so they will still continue to receive those, um, supports, the interventions. And again, we, of course, we have the MTSS process that provides those interventions once students are identified as needing additional support. Okay, next slide. So the meet of next year, our K-one, um, instructional schedule, what you're looking at here, and I'll just kind of briefly, um, discuss it, we are going to implement executive functioning, and that, um, the teachers will provide ten minutes of executive, executive functioning instruction, and our counselors will provide weekly executive functioning instruction for forty-five minutes. Now, as you can see, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, um, our students will have extended time for reading and math instruction. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we will integrate social studies and science. However, even though you don't see social studies and science on the Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we will, um, expose them and integrate that into the literacy curriculum, so they will still, um, get some of that social studies and science during that time. But we had to remove that so that we could extend that reading and math instruction for our K-one learners. All right, next slide. Now, this talks, um, the next slide, I'm going to talk about executive functioning. And this is, um, basically, executive functioning is teaches our students to be self-regulators. It helps them with attention, task initiation, and emotional control. And again, we want to equip our students with skills that, that they need as adults, and we want to start this at an early age, and we will phase in grades two through twelve over the next two to three years. And what I want you to get out of this slide is, um, that second paragraph, embedding executive functioning into our instructional model ensures that students not only know what to learn, but also know how to learn, which will empower them to become more independent, resilient, and goal-oriented learners. And those are examples of the eight executive functions. As you can see, we have self-control, flexibility, organization, and again, these are skills that students need to learn at an early age so that they can be successful. And then what are the benefits? We have academic benefits as well as social benefits, and I won't read those verbatim, but they are there for you to read, but, um, implementing executive functioning will help with academic, but as well as social, as, as well as social benefits. All right. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Um, first question is to Ms. Tellis Cooper.
Thank you for that presentation, uh, and thank you for the three-on-three discussions that we had, but you know, I'm a note taker. So I wrote down some of the things from the three-on-threes that I think would be very beneficial for you to just let everybody else know, too. I know in the beginning, when you were talking about the executive functioning, one of the great things that you brought up in the three-on-threes was, they're not just out, the teachers are not just out there, and counselors by themselves, who were telling us that Dr. Dunn's team would be helping with the lesson plan, so that's, want to talk a little bit about that, and then I'll ask you the next question.
Yes. Okay, so the, um, lesson plans, we have four different resources that we already have in, have in the district, so we won't have to purchase any additional resources. And, um, Dr. Dunn, um, and her team, as well as Sheri Ann Taylor, Dr. Taylor, they're working hand-in-hand to have a company to create the lesson plans for our teachers, so they will not have to make up what they're going to teach. It's going to be consistent across all schools, so the lesson plans will be provided to the teachers as well as to the counselors.
And then I think with the early learning, you were saying they will be training twenty days?
Yes. Okay, and I'm sorry, I took out some of the slides just because of time. Yes, so in, um, July, we will have all of the teachers, um, hired that are going to be teaching that first year, beginning July twenty twenty-six, and we will have twenty days in July that we would like to train those teachers, because again, we have never had, we've never had three-year-olds, we've had four-year-olds, um, for years, but this is new for everybody. So we are going to train the teachers, um, beginning July twenty twenty-six for twenty days. And we said previously that we will need additional funding perhaps for that, because we'll have to pay them to come in during the summer, but we want to get them ready, um, before the students arrive.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, um, first of all, as a twenty-year preschool teacher of three-year-olds, um, they are a whole different species. They're not four. Don't let them confuse you. They are not four. They learn by play. They learn by interaction. And I know the, on our thing, it has something about tablets. The last thing I want to see in a three-year-old classroom is a bunch of tablets. I had parents for years say, what's the best app for my three-year-old? And I said, your lap. Read to your child. I read to the children so much that they took the books home and read the, read them to their parents. They love to learn. They're creative little individuals. There's nothing better than to watch kids just free play and the things that they can learn and tell you, and I could go on and on and on, but please, please do not sit them at tables to do paperwork or set them in front of devices, because the experts are saying that kids shouldn't have more than about thirty minutes of tablet time, and God knows they've got that on their way to and from school. So please, that's my two cents.
Thank you. And Ms. Baker, from our observations in the other, we have seen students at play. You're exactly right. So yes, that will be definitely considered. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Mr. Christmas? Ms. Gori?
Good evening. Love the, uh, presentation, but actually, this is not the first time for three-year-olds in Clayton County. The reason we have the early, early learning center, that was a concept that I suggested to Dr. Beasley. I had the first three-year-old, uh, program at Huey Elementary School. The students were, uh, Hispanic students, and they do learn. They learn by playing, but they also learn very quickly. So, uh, we did have, uh, a program where they did, they had a structured time, but a lot of playing. Uh, so I am glad that we're going to go ahead and, uh, get our staff ready, but I also wanted to get back to your other, you mentioned the early learning center, I want to go back to OG. Uh, of course, again, I'm gonna thank you all for Orton-Gillingham, because it took me ten years of digging for us to get it. So glad that we have it. Um, I still have this, um, this year, you're focused in on the K-one. You said you're gonna implement within the next three years our grade levels, that's what you said?
No, that was executive functioning.
Oh, okay, well, I'm, okay, so let's, I want to go back to that, because I'm still going to reiterate the fact that you have a lot of students right now that are the COVID students that are behind, and I hope that we can accelerate how we are going to incorporate grades. We cannot go K-one, and then the next year after that, you just pick up two, three. We should, right now, in my opinion, we should be doing K through three, because that's the grade where we're looking at testing. You have kids that are, that are behind, and you're mentioning the way that you're going to do the schedule, but a school that utilizes Orton-Gillingham, which is the Bedford School, the Bedford School has own students only with IEPs. What they do is, you all are trying to hit all of the subject areas, they double up every day on reading, and they only do social studies for half of the year, and they only do science for the other half. And so you all already have your plan in place, but I would, uh, suggest that you look at that model, because that school has results. Now, people pay twenty-five thousand dollars plus for that year, but I think that they are the experts in, uh, improving reading by using Orton-Gillingham, and then, not to mention, you all didn't, you didn't mention the mirror, so, because a lot of people, I'm, actually, one of the things that I learned when I went to the leadership training and don't understand is why we use, we're using Orton-Gillingham, but we're also using the Wilson method, but you know, it's the same thing. So you're kind of doubling up two, you know, doubling up something when you really could just use the one, but I think what I was told is we'd already purchased the materials using Wilson, because it's all based on the science of reading. So I, I'm hoping that in the future, uh, this is a great plan that you have, but I hope that in the future that we can accelerate, uh, using Orton-Gillingham in more grades, especially K through five, because we gotta, uh, catch these, these children up with reading. I'm really looking forward to the Early Learning Center, and, uh, I'm gonna maybe have to speak with Dr. Smith to, um, see about some things I've heard about mascots. So, um, but anyway, we'll talk about that at another time. Thank you.
Is there any other board members that have a question, Ms. Hill?
Um, I just, I just want to say thank you. I'm very excited about, uh, the rollout for this, um, early literacy. I just have one question. The class structure, will there be two teachers, a teacher and a pair pro? How would this structure in the class to ensure this is implemented and it rolls out well?
Thank you, Ms. Hill. So for kindergarten, all of our kindergarten students have pair pros in them, but our first grade teachers, they, they will not, they don't have pair pros, so we will have two teachers in our kindergarten classes, or one teacher, one pair pro, but one teacher in our first grade, um, classrooms. Yes, but, but we will, you know, we, they will have the support, you know, we, we have coaches, we have administrators, so, and everybody has been, um, trained, our coaches were fully trained, so where support is needed, they will be able to provide support. And for our two through, um, two through five, students who are in grades two through five, they're being addressed, their reading deficits are being addressed through our early intervention program, so, so we're not leaving them out.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Dr. Young. Thank you so much for your presentations. Dr. Duncan, Dr. Johnson, thank you so much. We're now moving on to the, um, consent agenda. Now, remember, as we go through the consent agenda, at the end of the presentations, we will be voting on the consent agenda, being that this is a work session and board meeting combined. All right? Dr. Smith? Ms. Ramona Bivins?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Smith, colleagues and community. This evening, I will be presenting the monthly financial reports as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Um, we have one more month left in this fiscal year. We have collected five hundred eighty-one point four million dollars of our, um, revenues, that's eighty-two point two percent. Um, our, and our local tax revenue, we've collected ninety-one point nine percent of that, um, of the local revenue, a hundred eighty-two point six percent, state revenue, eighty point seven percent, and federal revenue, seventy-one point four percent. On the expenditure side, we, um, expended eighty percent of our budget, um, we're at five hundred and sixty-nine million, um, dollars of that. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on the monthly financial reports if you have any.
Any questions in regards to the monthly financial reports? Seeing none, you can move to the next topic.
Thank you. Next, we have the SPOS revenue collection report as of May thirty-first. Um, these are for funds that we received in May, they were actually collected in April, there's a one-month lag. So for fiscal year, um, for this year, for May twenty twenty-five, we collected five point six million dollars compared to six point one, um, at the same time last year in May. Um, you also see, just for a point of reference, for March and April, we show three months. Um, when you look at the cumulative total, we are on target to meet what we had, um, stated in our referendum. And our average monthly collections is around five point eight or five point nine million per month. Any questions on SPOS revenue?
Any questions on SPOS revenue? Seeing none, you can move to the next topic.
Thank you. Next, we have the purchasing report. Um, also on the purchasing report, on one thing, though, um, on page four, we need to remove one item under Student Services for Communities and Schools. Um, there, there's some ongoing negotiations, so the purchasing department and the user department asked that I'll remove that tonight, and we will bring it back at the next meeting. So, um, we have Report A with your consumables, and those are the items that are, um, purchases with a value of ten thousand dollars or more. Report B, all your non-consumable purchases made with the value of ten thousand dollars or more, but less than ten thou, uh, less than a hundred thousand. And then your Report C, these are the non-consumable items with the value of one hundred thousand dollars or more that require board approval. Um, those are detailed in the executive summary that was in the board packet, and we can answer any questions on those if you have any.
Any questions? Seeing none?
I have a question. Yes, I would, uh, kid, you say, you mentioned CIS, your, what, what was your rationale for?
So the department in the, um, the vendor, in the person part, they're still negotiating the final pricing, so they asked that we pull it, and we'll bring it back at the next board meeting in, um, in July for the office approval.
Ms. Hill?
I'd just like to follow up on Ms. Gori's question. What type of impact will that have on our district and/or the partnership with CIS, understanding that we won't meet again until July twenty eighth, twenty-fourth? Um, can you tell me more, or why we waited till the last minute to pull that?
Yes, um, that, this was just came to me today, but last year, while we went and looked, and last year, we approved it last year in August for this year as well. So it shouldn't have, um, an impact on the, um, that, that's my understanding.
Right. Mr. Christmas?
Ms. Bibbin, will it be more or less?
Uh, it should be less.
It should be less than two.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm gonna say that you're negotiating, Ms. Hill, has some really good questions about the impact that it has, and I'm, I'm gonna state for the record that since the board approves the budget, you all put this in here for us to read, that I would definitely be opposed to reducing it. And I think that before you, when you, that it's, when you all decide that you're gonna negotiate, I think you need to let the board know, uh, how much you're trying to reduce, because they have a great impact on what they do for us. You all did your budget, uh, the, we approved the budget, and when we did that, I thought that that was, that would still be included. So I, I don't think we should, uh, hear it this time after we've approved the budget, that someone would be making some cuts.
So for transparency, a million dollars cut was included in the budget for the communities in school, so that's what they're negotiating with right now.
Okay, that if, I, there wasn't, we weren't informed of that.
Okay.
Dr. Smith, send the budget, and what we're doing is, we're having, um, extended conversation with the organization to see if we can get a better pricing without interruption of any services. So that, let us work, let us work out, let us work it out, and we'll bring it back to the board.
And if, if I may, I just wanted, uh, just one, one small comment, because they're serving twenty-one schools presently, um, and if you're talking about a, a substantial cut like that, I can't understand how any organization would be able to move forward with their business if they weren't made aware of that prior to this time. So I don't know how it can be done, but I would like to hear more about it, um, at the negotiations. I just think good business practice would be, that's a conversation that you have before it reaches us, um, and, and impact our district and, and our students need support.
It was embedded in the budget, ma'am, and, uh, what we're trying to do is, first of all, you know, we had to make cuts, so you know, we had to reduce the budget, we had to cut somewhere, and what we're looking to do is
And what we're looking to do is negotiate with everybody, all vendors. We've asked all vendors to reconsider pricing. So we can make certain that we come in with a and deliver a good balanced budget. Communities is in school is no exception. We value them and we're looking to see what we can do relative to pricing that does not impact service, but helps us with our budget. If you will allow for us to have that conversation and negotiate, we'll bring back a proposal that hopefully will satisfy all concerns.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Ms. Vivins? Is that your report?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Joseph?
Good evening once again. Good evening once again.
Good evening.
You received the S F S adjustment update. This month there were total payments eighteen point eight million dollars of capital improvements. There were no change orders for this period. Additionally, you received the capital purchase report for adding between ten thousand and a hundred thousand dollars for review. Are there any questions regarding ongoing projects?
Ms. Baker?
Um, I just wanted to thank you, the staff and everyone with the Roswell School, um, the comments that I heard. Um, I just kind of walked around and listened and the students there were so excited. You know, alumni from there were so excited with what we've done and um. In case any of the large medias, people are watching tonight, shame on you for not being there. We, there is not very many of these schools left. We have one here in Clayton County. I know they were invited and they didn't show up on the week of of Juneteenth. So congratulations to you and shame on the local media.
Ms. Guarrie?
Yes, um, Mr. Joseph, I know you know what my question is, can you promise me that some trees will be cut? For North Clayton?
Yes, ma'am, like promised tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am. We have uh, see, we have received the approval to cut the trees from the county. Uh, the contractor has mobilized, they're on site today, the equipment will deliver today. And so trees will begin falling tomorrow. Uh, and we are still targeting an opening of August twenty twenty seven.
All right, about what time will the trees be coming down? Because I want to pull up.
We will, we will make sure that we deliver a limb to you personally, Ms. Guarrie.
All right, because you, because you, you are, you, you do know that I will be pulling up tomorrow. I'm I'm pulling up, so I just let them know I'll be coming. Bring that limb over because I'll be ready for some uh. Wood for the winter. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Any other board members have questions for Mr. Ronnet? Thank you, Mr. Joseph.
Joseph.
Ms. Albritt?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, other members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, colleagues and community members. The Personnel Changes Report summarizes all personnel actions for the period of May sixth through June sixth, two thousand twenty five. I do want to highlight that school leaders, along with all departments that contribute to the hiring process. With the Division of Human Resources, serving as the leading division, are doing a tremendous job ensuring that every classroom will be led by a caring adult. Um, at the time that the board report was submitted, there were two hundred ninety two teacher vacancies. As of Friday, there are two hundred thirty seven. We are finalizing plans for a substitute recruitment and long term substitute placement event on July seventeenth. The two thirty seven is more than one hundred sixty fewer teacher vacancies that we had at this time last year. All human resources updates were submitted to the Board of Education for your review. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Guarrie? Okay, fantastic. Mr. Christians? Ms. Dr. Haney? Ms. Baker?
Um, I just want to check, um, I've heard that we do not have pair pros in all of our special ed classes. And that is very disturbing to me, so I'm hoping that you're gonna tell me that's one, not true, or two, what we're gonna do to um, make it better for next year.
Absolutely. So there are pair professional vacancies. Um, of course, we are definitely highlighting the data related to teacher vacancies, making sure that that teacher record is in place. I don't have the exact number before me, um, in terms of special ed pair professional vacancies. I'm happy to pull that and share it with Dr. Smith for distribution to the board. Absolutely.
Ms. Hill, you have anything? Ms. Cooper? Fantastic.
Thank you, Ms. Albritt.
Thank you.
We have just completed the consent agenda, agenda presentation. Now I need a motion. Ms. Cooper?
I'm moved that we accept the consent agenda item.
Can I get a second?
I, well.
With the exception of the C I S?
I I want to, yeah, I'm, go ahead.
You want to make the motion?
No, you go ahead. I just want to pull the, I want to pull the purchasing report to vote separately. I think that's where C I S is.
Um, I make the motion that we move to accept the consent agenda where we're pulling the C I S.
No, the purchasing report, right. Ms. Baker, second, I have a motion on the floor, Ms. Baker has seconded, can I get a vote on the consent agenda minus the purchasing report? Ms. Williams? Fantastic, it's unanimous. Now we have a um, a, I need a motion for the purchasing report. Ms. Guarrie?
I want to move that we accept the purchasing report without the recommendation for communities and schools to be reduced.
Can you state that motion again, please?
I want to make a motion that we accept the purchasing report without. Uh, having the communities and schools funding reduced.
Okay, so you're basically saying that it is not as is because they're changing it, am I correct? There, you guys proposed to change the C I S.
Already pulled it, we've asked that report already.
Okay, so it's not in our purchasing report?
Mrs. Vivin, in her presentations asked that we pull that particular item.
Okay, so we are voting on the purchasing report minus the C I S negotiations. So what we're now doing is we're voting on everything that's in the purchasing report with the exception of C I S. Can I get a motion? All right. Okay. Just so that I don't mess this up. You made a motion.
I'll change it.
Okay.
I will, I want, I'm, I move that we accept the motion, I'm sorry, I move that we accept the purchasing report minus C I, C I S. But I also, I want to amend that, I would like to have a secondary motion to it, but we can go ahead and just do it.
All right, let me get a second. Dr. Haney, the motion has been made and properly seconded, can I get a vote on the purchasing report? Ms. Williams?
Now I have a question to to Mr. Even, okay, so Ms. Um. Ms. Vivin said that she pulled it, am I in order to make sense, we, since the board does have. Control of the budget? And if it was a me, it was listed on the agenda? And before we had the meeting, it wasn't pulled?
Right.
Do I, I'm asking, let me just.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms.
Do I have the, do we have the right to still vote, to to vote on C I S?
The board does have that right. I I wouldn't know sitting here what the ramifications are, just not having looked into anything. All I know is probably saying to board members know that it's pulled for the reasons Dr. Smith outlined. So I'm not saying I could advise that, but I can tell you that the board does have the authority to do that.
All right, well, in that case, I want to move that we accept uh, the the budget for C I S as listed as previously listed.
I would ask you, Ms. Ms. Guarrie, if you would allow for us to bring back a proposal that we think would be satisfactory for everybody. If you would allow for us a day or two without you trying to.
Right, Dr. Smith, let me, let me clear this.
I I've made the motion, so you can either.
Okay, she's made the motion, um, she's made the motion, do I got a second? Do I have a second? You second. Okay, she's made a motion, it's been properly seconded, can I get a vote that, what was your motion?
Uh, to accept the C I S budget as it, as as was listed in the purchasing report.
Right, but it wasn't listed in the purchasing.
It was listed in the purchasing report.
Not, not according to the presentation that was made.
It was just removed when she came up. It wasn't removed before we started.
It was listed in.
Are you aware that what you were asking for, because in the budget, it has been reduced? So I'm asking you to allow for us to have time, for us to have communication with them to be able to.
Yeah.
Um, impact, to be able to come back with a a pricing that doesn't disturb the services.
Okay.
It would be advantageous for us and this board and our finances if you will allow for us to do that.
Um, I I don't want to move forward until we got this perfectly clear. See, because my understanding is that, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Dr. Smith is saying that when he passed the original budget, and I believe that was last week. You had already reduced C I S in that budget, is that correct?
Yes.
So my understanding is if that's the case. What Ms. Guarrie is asking for, as is, as it was pulled from the budget, is what we're voting on. And at that point, it's going to reduce C I S's revenue a million dollars, am I correct?
Yeah, but we pulled, we've asked.
Right, no, no, I'm not asking you if you pulled it, I'm saying would that be the situation as we vote?
In the current budget, it's reduced.
Right, and she's asking us to consider the original budget, which has already been reduced by the million dollars. So if she's for C I S, right now she's putting them at a disadvantage because they can't even come to the table to ask for more money, am I correct?
If you approve the budget as is, with it being reduced, what we're asking is that allow for us to have continued communication, we'll inform the board. What we come up with and hopefully it will be satisfactory to the board, to the services and to the students.
And lastly, um, Ms. Vivins did state that you were going to bring this back to the table at the next work session, am I correct? So this will be presented to us as a a a recommendation at the next, at the next budget.
We'll be making another recommendation centered around C I S only and the price and associated with it, with all of its services.
So I I refuse to do a dis- disservice to C I S by voting on that motion right now, as it is. Because Dr. Smith has already reduced them to a million dollars, took out a million dollars from their budget. So if I'm for C I S, I'd be doing a disservice by voting on that motion, uh, voting positively on that motion.
We would be bringing a a proposal back to the board that uh, that will hopefully restore a lot of the concerns relative to any loss of services.
Okay, so let's, let's go on with the vote.
Since you're speaking for me, let me speak for myself.
For you, I was just clarifying.
Okay, let's clarify. We're not, I'm not doing a disservice to C I S. What I'm doing is I'm emphasizing, as some of the other members have emphasized, what they do for us now. To reduce a service by fifty percent. And as you can understand, that was what was given to us. If that was not the case, then we should have never seen that it was going to be two million dollars. So it's no mistake on my part, what I saw, what I, what I read was my expectation was for it to be two million dollars, not for it to be reduced in half. If that were the case, then that information would have been given to us and it was not. Now, we can vote it down, if you're going to, if you, if you're saying that you're gonna negotiate. Are you saying to me that if you're gonna reduce, you're saying right now it's a million dollars, are you willing to go up? A little bit, but maybe not to two million?
We're negotiating, ma'am, and you're on, you're, you're on to what our desires are, yes.
Well, if you, if.
But the final numbers will be brought back to the board in terms of what we will ask you to consider.
That is fine, what I will do is, is I will then withdraw the motion. Because regardless of your opinion of of what I'm doing a disservice. I could, we could still vote it up or down, and if it's voted down, that would be fine. But I will take the high road and I will withdraw the motion.
Okay, and and board members, please be careful as the superintendent is trying to negotiate a deal. We're taking a lot of his leverage away if we're stating where we stand before it's actually presented to us. So let's let them present it to us at the next work session and at that point, let's then engage in discussion. All right, now, um, um, you you withdrew that. We need to still vote on the purchasing report as is.
We've already done that, we've already done that.
All right, so that's done. How did we do that?
Because when I made the motion, we made the motion without that part.
Right, but didn't we pull it?
We did, but we've already voted.
You're ready, you you called the vote that it was unanimous in the purchasing report, Ms. Guarrie had the separate item, which.
Gotcha.
Draw, so you're ready for you.
Gotcha, gotcha, all right, thank you. All right, so now we on Board Matters Policy Series D First Read. This is up for discussion. I think, Ms. Baker, you had some.
Um, my concern, it was with policy DJ E D. Which is bids and quotations or. It's, it's wanting to take it from the board not approving anything. Below two, two fifty. It was a hundred thousand dollars and now we're taking up to two hundred fifty dollar, two hundred fifty thousand, which the board will not have pre approval on. I have a problem with that amount. That is a hundred and fifty percent increase. Now, I understand for construction that 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 probably is not a lot. But for the average thing, I don't see why it has to go up that amount. We did, you, the request wasn't for another fifty thousand, it was for a hundred and fifty thousand. So that is my concern and whoever wants to to uh, change my mind will feel free, but good luck.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, and Ms. Baker, um. If perhaps Mr. Joseph or Mrs. Uh. Vivins could come in and explain that is a state recommended amount.
Good evening once again, uh, as Dr. Smith alluded to, uh, House Bill one three seven. Uh, increased the thresholds from one hundred thousand dollars to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we were just bringing this to the board's attention. As you stated, this would be beneficial for construction aspect in terms of accelerating the delivery. Uh, given the challenge that we face today, today's time. Uh, again, nothing would be sort of been the four forty, uh, even items that are uh, below that threshold will be submitted to the board uh, at every meeting. Again, this is just for information. We'll go to take it into consideration.
Any other questions in regards to policy D?
I just would like for clarification, when I was listening to our um. Uh, training for G S V A, I understood that to be for capital um, projects only, but maybe I need to just go back and get um. Uh, Ms. Uh, Demiris, could you look that up and give us clarification on that? Because I understood that threshold to only be for capital projects.
Great, thank you.
Wouldn't, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Wouldn't, I think Mr. Doyle was, he also took the training as well. If if that is the case, then.
It, it, there's a couple of issues here, it applies to public works, construction. Uh, projects, and that's broadly defined, that applies to cities, counties, school boards. And that's the number that has been increased from a hundred to two hundred and fifty. Um, another discussion to have is the board approval threshold to Ms. Baker's point, so we can all look at this together. And uh, you're in a first read, I believe.
Right.
This evening on on this. Um, and and so that Ms. Baker and the board can get input and so we can get the information there.
Okay, I think more discussion has to be done on policy D. And the way in which we should do this is um, for the individuals that want to change what they currently have. Um, if you can mark up the policy and send it to um, Ms. Garrett's um, group. For review, they will insert it into a policy and it will give us the opportunity to vote on it as as they review it. So Clem would would um, be included in that that revision that we want. But the board members will have to um, um. Make the suggestion on what those changes should be. This is only the first read, so we come back to the work session at the end of July. And at that point, hopefully we'll have something marked up and have options to choose from, so that when the vote comes up. If one goes down, we have backups and alternatives to vote on. All right, so this is a good, a good start for the first read. Secondly, is the policy series E First Read. Is there any discussion that needs to be made on that? Seeing none, we now will move on to the business agenda. Um, I believe Ms. Tori Tanks is here?
Yes.
Okay, what we're gonna do is we're gonna receive a brief presentation on. Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to receive a brief presentation on the Golden, the Georgia Golden Olympics. What the um, what the government is trying to do, the Clayton County government is trying to do, is come into partnership with us with an MOU that will allow us to do the activities that she's going to present. Now, um, when she presents this, I do have something to say after she presents it. And hopefully, we can get a consensus of the board on whether she should move forward with that partnership. And maybe there may have to be some changes in there, but let's hear what she needs to say and see if it's something that we're interested in partnering with the Clayton County government with. Now, she's from the the um, the senior services division of the government. So it's overall the Clayton County government, but the senior services is the ones that want to put on the Golden Olympics. After she has our discussion with us and gets a feel for if we want to move forward with this, she then has to go back to her commission and actually do a presentation and get a vote from them. Am I correct?
You're correct.
Alright, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. Um, Chair Stryker, Madam Vice Chair Baker, the board and Superintendent Smith. I am Tori Starter Tanks. I'm Director of Clayton County Senior Services. And you've probably heard of us via Mayfest and our wonderful senior centers, and I'm not just saying that because I'm the director, but we have prided ourselves on positive active aging. Um, one of the things that I do is I'm very passionate about senior services. It's not just my job. Everything that I do is centered around senior services and aging well. So my volunteer work, I have been a volunteer on the Georgia Golden Olympics Board. I have served as a board member for the past six years. And also, I travel every year to Wana Robins, Georgia, so our seniors participate in Georgia Golden Olympics. For the sake of brevity, I'm not going to go through the whole entire slideshow. I'm gonna just go really quick so you can kind of get a gist of what's going on. But Georgia Golden Olympics is an amazing opportunity for opportunity for seniors in Georgia. It has been in conception for the past 45 years. It has been held in Wana Robins, Georgia. The executive director is Ms. Vicky Pilgrim. She has been the executive director and the coordinator for the past 45 years. What's happening now is um GGO didn't do the best job of succession planning. Um, and so they are kind of in a pinch because Vicky wants to retire from being the executive director of GGO. Um, and because I'm on the board and I'm so passionate and I'm always talking about Clayton County and the wonderful things that we have here, they were like, well, will you take it? And I was like, oh, I can't take it to be the executive director, but I definitely would look at being the coordinator of GGO. Um, but I gave them some conditions. I would only take it if we could move it to Clayton County. Um, this is an amazing opportunity for our county. It is county. It will boost our economy. We will have over 1,500 Olympians competing. Most people are very familiar with um the National Olympic Games, but um the state games is also a tie-in to the senior games. Um, I think that if we do this, it could be a staple in Clayton County for the next 45 years. Um, GGO is a four-day event. There are over 20 sports, um, 50 to 50 to 60 events are held. There are 200 or so volunteers. Um, our board is 21 members of our board. It is a nonprofit entity. One of the things that I like most is I did speak to Mr. Townsend because I wanted to kind of do some research to find out like how this would work. Because one of the things that I'm most excited about is we're having an issue in my field. Young people are not choosing career paths that will lead them to work into working senior centers. And I'm passionate about this whole intergenerational concept. This will allow the basketball team, the track and field team to volunteer to help run the Olympics. It's a great intergenerational concept, a great intergenerational model. It can help them when they're getting ready to go to college. They can put the volunteer work that they have done with GGO on their resumes. If you go to the to the next slide. Um, so each event has an event director. It has a manager. GGO has all the insurance requirements. GGO has a pretty healthy budget. We are not asking the school board to do anything but to allow us some space. Maybe like Terra Stadium, maybe a high school um to do the track and field events. Most of the events will take place in parks and recreation facilities or in senior services facilities. Um, you can go to the next slide. Um, so there are so many games. It's for ages 50 and older. There's archery, badminton, ballroom dance, three-on-three basketball. And I do want to let you know that our women's three-on-three basketball team here in Clayton County qualified for the National Games and they will be competing in Iowa in this in July. So that's a great kudo for us. Um, there's three-point shooting billiards. You can, I'm, you could just clock golf, cornhole cycling, free throw, frisbee throw, field events, horseshoe, pickleball, racquetball, roll race, shuffleboard. You can keep going. Those are some of the pictures. Um, you can just kind of keep going.
He's a good looking man.
So one of the things. One of the things that's really, really exciting. One of the things that's really, really exciting is that it's for 50 and up. Um, it's an opportunity for people to really compete and qualify to go on to the National Games. You can look at the National Games website. You can see all the wonderful events. Um, there will be a torch lighting. There will be a parade. It's just like the Olympics that you see, the National Olympics. So this is something to bring a lot of positivity to our county, opportunity for some positive aging. We're just asking for you guys to enter into the MOU with us to be able to use some shared space. Um, we had to cancel the games for this year because Vicky is retiring. So there are, they're not going to be GGO games in Wana Robins for this year, but these games are scheduled for 2026. It takes us a year and a half to plan the game, so we need to know sooner than later whether we'll be able to do this because we have a lot of planning to do.
What, uh, Mr. Stryker?
Yeah.
I knew that you said you want to talk, but I'm gonna have to take some executive privilege here as the senior sitting around here. Tori and I know each other very well because I'm a member of the Frank Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I've already looked at which sport that I'm going to be participating in. So Mr. Stryker can say what he wants to say, but I'm gonna just put my motion on. I'm gonna move that we uh take the recommendation.
I second.
And and that we have the Georgia Golden, yeah, the GGO games. So I'm I'm just going to make my motion. Go ahead, Chair Person.
Motion was made by the um by Ms. Corrie. Do I got a second?
Senior citizen.
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna pick you, Ms. Hill, because I don't want to indicate that you're senior, alright? But you're you you with it? Okay. And Ms. Hill will second this. Can I get, can I get a vote on the MOU? There there is, we'll vote on the MOU. The MOU is passed, but I do need to ask the superintendent to do um his due diligence.
We would like more, Mr. Chairman, than to oper- operationalize uh this event here in Clayton County for the senior citizens.
I think that's a great idea. One concern, though. We have a policy um KG, KGR1, which indicates that a facility use, there first has to be an agreement that you guys would sign. You have to provide the certificate of insurance. And then lastly, there's a, in that agreement, it's, there's a payment. You can work with the superintendent and what that payment will be, but I want.
We will work with you.
Okay, so.
She already mentioned the insurance requirement. She got that covered.
You have.
Correct. So we have the insurance requirements and then we have to provide those same requirements to the county as well.
Okay, great. So if that's taken care of, we're we're fine. The motion is passed. You have the MOU. You can now go to the Board of Commissions and tell them that you have the backing of the board there.
I'm, I'm gonna need you to find that little, that that runner, that 50-year-old runner down.
Okay.
I'm gonna need you to get some some information on him.
I do want to say this. Thank you guys so much. Um, I'm looking forward to working with the school system more so we can figure out, can we do like a pathway program to get high school students to work in senior centers and volunteer because aging is absolutely amazing, amazing. So thank you very much.
Yeah, Ms. Tanks, we really, we're really counting on you to integrate our our students. So in all your plans, please make, you know.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, alright, lastly, we have one last um agenda item, and Clem, I need you to wake up on this one. You ready? Alright, so we have the Convocation Center. Um, Dr. Simpson, I'm just going to tell you to stand up to the to the podium right away. But we have the um discussion of the Convocation Center, the RFP for the Convocation Center. One of the concerns that I've heard is that we're voting on an entire RFP as opposed to just the operator. I want you to speak to that if we're voting on the RFP as it's as it's stated or and we amend it so that it's only the operations and we can work on some of the other components of that RFP. Um. Any, anybody else has any questions in regards to Convocation Center and RFP?
Yes, all that I've been asking for all day long. I, my understanding was that we are only voting on the the company to operate. So I just want clarity. If that was what we're doing, then that should have been a statement that was a recommendation instead of now we have some documents that was put in E-Board. We can't, if we're, if we're gonna vote on the RFP, then I mostly, we need to table it because we have a issue with um what goes in there. So can you all clarify what we are actually voting on?
The mic is yours.
Yes, sir. Um. Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, community in large and and staff. Yes, to be correct, and Mrs. Stryker, you started out by stating just that.
What?
The operator itself is what we are recommending. Um, there's a hope that you all will agree that this vendor, this operator can fulfill and is capable of fulfilling the task of wanting the Convocation Center. And that is what we recommend. Yes, sir.
Before, before anybody else goes, now Clem, I need you to to um to decipher that for us if we.
Right, and you all hopefully got my communication recommending that it should be made clear in the item and in the minutes what the board is approving and and whatever, you know, scope that we have. And I think that's been laid out, so we have that information. The next item will be the contract that is negotiated. And the various parties are, um, I understand, in discussion about that. So that is not what is being approved tonight by the board.
Can I just, Mr. Chairman, can you just, can we just get the statement? We just need a statement for what we're voting for, not, we need, is the statement that we are accepting the company? We're not accepting all the other stuff that's in the RFPs. Okay, can you get, can you all give us that statement so that we are clear on that? What is that, what we're voting on?
Right, when you say give you the statement, like a verbal statement or do you want to follow up in? Yes.
The actual motion.
Yeah, well, we're asking the board to consider a motion for the approval of the operator of the Convocation Center. And the contract itself can be discussed and negotiated at a later date.
And that's all you need in my, what Dr. Smith just said. That's that's what you need. And and I understand that there's been confusion before.
Yes.
But that's what you're voting on.
Ms. Hill? Okay, Ms. Hill, okay. So before I get to your motions, and I I've I've heard you. Um, what we're voting on this evening is the operators of the RFP, but not the details of the RFP that's still being worked, that's still being worked on and the contract.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so the motion would be.
Mr. Chairman, you please make it. You just, you stated it very clearly. Make that.
No, no, she's she's gonna make the motion.
No, you you should ask for the.
The motion, Ms. Hill.
I make a motion that we accept the RFP as stated for the operator without the contract negotiation that we can move forward.
Ms. Ms. Cooper.
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote on the operators of the RFP, the conv- the Convocation Center? Ms. Williams? Okay, it's unanimous. People, that is the end of this meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for the seating.
This will be asked for out.
Yes.